The flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with the great evening justice for all.
Good evening. We have a full, full agenda tonight, so we're gonna try and zip on through. Open time for the public? Anybody? Only one's coming twice? No. How about some warrants? Capital warrants while we wait for 7:10? Oh, wait a minute, 7:00, yeah, 7:10. Department head meeting.
We've got a bill warrant.
Okay. Just one bill?
Yep, we have a bill warrant.
Diana, where is that Five Star in that?
Yes, it's your bill warrant. It's in that total.
Ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure? We have the Five Star bill warrant is in here.
We've discussed actually the idea of withholding.
Yeah, it does. It's within it. How much is the Five Star bill warrant?
I believe it's forty-nine or fifty. Bruce, do you know off the top of your head what the Five Star requisition was? Was it forty-nine thousand?
No.
Don't remember. I think it was approximately forty-nine.
Ed had thought there was a hundred and fifty-two. I understand there's a lesser amount than that in retainage.
... two thousand and was remained in the fund.
In the funds.
In the fund, okay.
And I know to a certain extent we're putting you on the spot, but if everything went wrong and we had to do all the work ourselves?
No.
Okay, so there is... So the question is, do you want to authorize payment?
Because you don't know what the story is.
Right. I would say in light of recent circumstances and events and the lack of clarity around the situation, we move to withhold those funds for now and not pay them, keep them in retainage until such time as we can get clear responsibility determined and cost determined for repairs.
And I would agree with you because I haven't seen a significant action on this more severe items. What I've seen them do is cosmetics and that's not... I would...
You need a second?
We do now, yeah, because I can't... Yes.
Second?
Second to withhold payment of the...
Five Star.
Five Star.
I would suspect that the IRC is gonna be before long or way to after because I know they've done a lot of work with their shows on the area.
So we would wait then to make the payment? Because we have an invoice in from Five Star for one-third roughly of the amount of money that we held back and retained, retainage.
They have a one-third of it?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand is the actual number, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand is over one-fifty-two, so it's about...
We said about one-hundred and fifty.
We have one-fifty-two in the fund right now.
But that's not necessarily all of Five Star's.
Right, it's not necessarily all of Five Star's.
I'm saying one-hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand is roughly just Five Star's.
What's the word?
So we have some input from the town as well.
David, the issue here is Five Star. They put in their request for fifty thousand and sixty-seven dollars for release of funds on the building.
I realize that there have been certain events occurring over the past couple of weeks I wasn't privy to, but let me get this right. The floor has been declared needing to be replaced? Is this a true statement?
Well, I don't know whether they've declared it or... I think that's still a debate.
There's a change in today's emails though. You know, I think it might be good idea for somehow the IRC... We've getting a lot of emails back and forth, but I haven't seen all of them. I've seen a good number of...
What my concern is...
A bunch of them.
No.
The tile people agreed to warranty the tile. The scratches.
So Bruce, I guess Bruce, what I'm trying to say is I don't know to the extent of how much money is needed for the seniors to get in there and bake brownies. And the only real bargaining chip we have right now is holding some of that money back that it does get done. If they walk, if they walk, then, you know, we're stuck with fixing what needs to be fixed in the senior center and that's, you know, it's been dragged on long enough. So it sounds to me that releasing money at this time may not be an appropriate thing unless we have everything lined up that the senior center can then open on X date. And that would be my only opinion.
This is the latest on the floor issue that I got today, which you might want to see. Keep changing. Does anybody want to sit in this chair?
No, it's fine, go ahead.
David said that. Until the room is usable and completed, maybe something to think about holding some of the money back.
All right, well, in this letter it says, "In essence, the manufacturer has recommended stripping, buffing, and waxing the floor is outlined in their letter. Five Star will replace the tiles that have deep grooves in any other deficient tiles."
So they're not replacing the whole floor?
Not talking about replacing the floor.
So it's a patch job? Okay.
Mike, you remember he has a problem with the school? Do you get a different dialogue? Does it never match?
No, I know, and there's no guarantee that the tiles that we don't replace, that sat with water on them, don't pop up at some time in the future.
Did we get a cost from Armstrong to replace the whole floor, including labor?
Well, I asked Ed, in his opinion, if everything went wrong and we had to do all the work that's left to do, are we holding enough money to do it? And the answer is no.
Okay. If we release the fifty?
No, if we even at where we are.
Just to give two gestures to Five Star, I don't know what they've done the last two weeks. All I know is you guys...
We still haven't dealt with...
We've had issues. We... I don't think the heating issues are 100% solved yet.
I've seen confusing emails on that issue.
Yeah, and some of the closets still do not have ceilings. The assessors are...
I'm not here, but I'm assuming you told me, you know, but there were some issues you told me today about the insulation.
Right.
You wanted to do the insulation, so I really don't want to do any insulation.
So Mike, I would probably hold off on releasing money. Maybe we need to sit down with these guys again in a separate time and...
There's an email attached to that where...
Mike?
Listing by Marsh, summarizing the status of all the items, which I assume that the selectmen are popular or apparently not.
I think I got it right at the end of the day.
End of day, I didn't see it.
End of day.
That's not up to date.
So we have this?
I think we have a copy.
I say that the architect is doing an excellent job in running after these issues. And he summarized that in a memo that the selectmen should see.
Yeah, we didn't get that.
I'll forward it to you.
We don't have any...
Get it till after four.
We have a motion that was made and seconded to pay the bill warrant except for the Five Star.
I would go along with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have... You gonna do it? Yep.
So we have bill warrant number W-11-41 for the total amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars and two-hundred-and-ninety-seven, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight, thirty-seven cents minus Five Star's fifty thousand, sixty-seven, and twenty-six cents. So it's a total amount subtracting Five Star.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That number?
Oh, I thought you did the subtraction.
Just take the total amount minus thirty-seven cents.
Okay.
PCS?
No. We'll come back to this.
7:10.
Yeah, we'll start.
All right. Is that in the time? Okay, here's passing. It's set, we're gonna come skip back to department head meetings. Diana, how does this set up? We got energy under department heads.
Yes, because we wanted to have the department heads here for the presentation.
Okay, but the floor goes to the energy committee at this point in time?
Yes.
Floor goes to the energy committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Chairman, selectmen, panelists. Self, I'll be brief because we have other people here that can give you more details. South Hampton Energy Committee, which is like you, making me myself right now, have been working on energy issues in town. We're here to let yourselves, who have known, an investment grade audit will be performed by Siemens Energy Company during the future in South Hampton, in which Siemens will identify energy savings measures to all town buildings and facilities. The money for the investment grade audit that Siemens will do is already okay at the fall 2010 special town meeting to make this project move smoothly in the organization of who's going to be involved and how it will work. Beth Greenblatt, Beacon Integrated Solutions, who is at the service of the town of South Hampton, as well as Scott Rattay from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And Diana will probably add in some information there too. But the year before, to you and Diana or Beth, if you want to provide additional information on this?
I'll turn it over to Beth. She's got the whole... Well, I'm probably up here, Beth, so we can hear audio.
Yeah, take our witness table.
[laughing]
My name is Beth Greenblatt. I'm from Beacon Integrated Solutions.
We prepared a short presentation, which I promise I will not go through in its entirety tonight. Some of the material I'm providing here is for background, a leave behind, and certainly I'm happy to answer some questions. I'm joined by my colleague Catherine Rattay, who many of you may know from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And I'd like to go through first a couple of slides of who we are and what we're doing with respect to this project, and also a little bit about performance contracting for those that don't have the background on what performance contracting is, and again, be available to answer any questions about the project that you folks are embarking upon. So with that said, the first slide, Beacon is the owner's agent to the town. We were engaged originally by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to support the commission in its efforts to go out with a regional procurement for energy performance contracting services. Pioneer Valley issued a solicitation on behalf of... How many municipalities, Kathy?
Thirteen.
Thirteen municipalities to secure the services of a national energy services company to provide energy savings performance contracting for the individual communities. In December of 2009, the town applied to the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources for the support of a performance contracting owner's agent. And my firm, Beacon, was engaged to provide 20 communities in Pioneer Valley and Franklin County those exact services. My firm has about 25 years of expertise in the energy industry. We're private energy advisors, and our experience in performance contracting is very specific. So we sit on your side of the table, helping you work with the vendor who would potentially provide these services for you. In June of 2010, Catherine and I flipped hats, and we actually hired Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Catherine in particular, to help support the local needs of the community here because of her familiarity and understanding of your specific needs. So how will we help you through this process? Again, we sit on your side of the table. We were engaged by the energy office to act on your behalf as an agent of the community, at the direction of the community, in working with Siemens, who was the selected energy services company, to first develop a project that meets your economic and technical requirements, and then if you then move to the next stage of construction, overseeing that construction process. Our role, as you see here, ranges from project administration to technical review of the documentation that's developed and provided to you, all the way through construction and commissioning, depending on how long the process takes. My role and Catherine's role with respect to this project is funded through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. So our funding is limited to the timeframe that those funds are available. But the town has been given an allocation, and we've been working with Diana to make sure that we support you in a way that you need the most support. So with that, I'd like to spend a few minutes just talking about performance contracting and what it means. I think at the start of this meeting, we heard a little bit about a construction project that the town is involved with that was likely procured under Chapter 149, which is a design big build process. You put a design out, you go out to bid, you choose the lowest responsible bidder, they build the project. The project that you are considering with Siemens is different. It's a procurement under Chapter 25A that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission did on your behalf. It is design-build. Siemens is the contractor that starts with you at the beginning and follows you through the construction and the commissioning, and beyond that through what's called a performance period that we'll talk about. Under a performance contract, you have the opportunity to upgrade building infrastructure and increase building efficiency. Basically, anything that saves energy and water is eligible to be implemented under these projects. You have the opportunity to reduce your operations and maintenance expenses by investing in capital equipment in your buildings that are causing some drain, obviously, on your operating budgets. And also, you have the opportunity under this project to implement renewable strategies. Again, to the extent it either saves or generates energy or saves water, you can implement those projects based on your own economic thresholds under this type of project. Key to a performance contract, and very specific, is that the energy and water savings generated by the investments that are made in your buildings are guaranteed. That guarantee is not only contractual, but it's statutory. Under this program, Siemens is obligated by state law to guarantee the energy and water savings that is generated through the investments in the buildings. Again, all of the procurement requirements that need to happen as part of this process have been fulfilled. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission issued its solicitation under 25A, and Siemens Industries was selected as the energy services company to provide those services for all of the communities that were a part of that procurement. There is no further bidding requirements. With that being said, we have worked very hard with Siemens to ensure that all of the subcontracting work that they do as part of these projects is in fact subbed out so that you can be assured of getting fair and competitive pricing. And under this program, Diana and members of the energy committee and others, as the stakeholders are involved, will have an opportunity to do due diligence on that pricing before the project is accepted. So how does it work? If you flip to what is titled Slide 5, you'll see that before the program, you have an energy budget. And so 100% of your energy budget right now is going into your buildings. During the program, there will be energy savings. Obviously, you improve your lighting, you improve your HVAC systems, you insulate your building shell, perhaps replace windows if that's a key capital requirement of the community. There will be energy savings. Those energy savings, instead of reducing your operating expense during the term of this project, which can be up to 20-year financing term, is instead reinvested into the buildings. So in short, what you're doing is you're investing in your buildings today, and you're using the value or the benefit of those savings that will accrue over 20 years to pay off that capital investment. So typically, performance contracts, to the extent there is goal seeking that's involved, are designed to be self-funding, which means all of the energy savings, energy and water savings, plus any grants or rebates from third parties, either grants from the energy office or grants from utilities, are used to pay for the cost of the debt obligation that the town would incur on an annual basis. So in essence, it is a budget-neutral endeavor. The town may, however, decide that it wants to invest beyond that which can be supported by energy savings, and it has, under this procurement mechanism, the ability to do so. So if the town decided it wanted to do projects that didn't pay for itself within the timeframe that the projects would be required to pay for themselves, it could invest some additional capital through either existing resources or raising additional funds. So you have some flexibility there. But again, that's a strategic decision by the town. It's a goal that the town sets. It is not one that's set by the contractor. All right? The next couple of slides will give you a sense of this process that Diana and others will be going through with Catherine and myself and Siemens. There's really three phases to a performance contract. There's what I like to refer to Phase One as the discovery phase. And that's where we are right now. The town is about to engage Siemens to do an investment grade audit in all of its town buildings, including the school. As part of that effort, Siemens will do a full analysis and discovery, full interrogation, if you will, of all the building systems and all of the building infrastructure to identify energy savings and, to the extent as directed by the town, renewable energy opportunities in the buildings. That data will then be presented back in real economic terms with costs, savings, and paybacks, and will be built into a financial pro forma, if you will, to demonstrate that over the term, again, you can finance these projects up to 20 years by state law, the town may decide to look at a shorter term. The shorter the term, the smaller the project, for obvious reasons. You're leveraging the value of the energy savings over the term. Siemens will come back to the town with a proposal, if you will, which is the result of an investment grade audit report that will show the full scope of the work. Some of that scope will be up to about 30% design. Some of that scope may be at a higher design. But it is, again, because this is a design-build project, the design will not be complete at the time that the town gets the proposal. What you'll have is a partial design. You'll have a firm fixed cost with a guaranteed not to exceed unless you change the scope. And you will have a guarantee of savings that Siemens is, again, contractually and statutorily obligated to support every year for the term of the contract. And if they don't meet that guarantee, as demonstrated by an annual analysis that's done, again, contractually and statutorily, then they are on the hook to write the town a check or provide additional services as directed by the town. So the investment grade audit, again, is going to step back. It's going to do a full interrogation of the buildings, of the utility bills. Diana and others will be tasked with providing a lot of information. Siemens will be walking through all of the buildings, and they'll do a very, very thorough and detailed analysis of the energy savings and water savings opportunities in the buildings, as well as renewable options if that's a desire of the town. If the town decides it is interested in moving forward into a construction project, the cost of the investment grade audit activities that Siemens has done, all that engineering work that Siemens has done, will be rolled into the overall construction cost of the project. So there's no upfront payment for it. It's captured in the overall sell price, if you will, of the project. If the town takes the report and says, "This is interesting. We really want to move forward," but town meeting says no, or you're not able to finance the project for whatever reason at a rate that is achievable and meets your economic requirements. Under the terms of the contract the town is about to embark on, you have the ability to break up, if you will. You have the ability to say, "Thank you, but we're not moving forward." And there will be a fee. That was, as Kurt said, at town meeting, was approved for that interrogation of the buildings. The fee is a...
What was the fee was?
Eight thousand five hundred.
Yes, eight thousand five hundred.
However, as I said before, if the town decides it wants to move forward into a construction project, the cost of that analysis gets rolled into the overall project, and Siemens then goes about building the project based on a very specific scope of work with very specific implementation requirements. They will do full turnkey service. They will have done the design. They will finish the design as they're going through the build process. They will do the full construction. They will do commissioning, which is, as you all know from the other construction projects you've done, key to the success of any project. They will then do, year over year, what is known in the industry as measurement and verification. They will come back every year, they'll look at the energy bills, they'll go look through the buildings again to see if anything else has changed. And provided the energy savings have been achieved, everyone's happy. If the energy savings have not been achieved, then Siemens will be on the hook to make the town whole.
You taking questions at this point?
Absolutely.
So if the savings exceeds the guarantee from Siemens, who gets that spread?
That's a very, very good question. You do. All excess savings accrues to the benefit of the town. This is the town's project. Siemens is basically, in this regard, Siemens and any other energy services company, is a high-end general contractor. They do engineering, but most of the work that they do is subbed out to subcontractors. They always look for local subcontractors, provided they meet their requirements, but most of the work is subbed out. So they get paid based on the construction work that they build. They are not paid through the savings. You're using the savings to pay back your financial obligation. Any excess savings just accrues to the bottom line benefit of the operating budget.
Okay, then one other question if I made this too. So on the capital side, in the initial capital outlay, it is funded through municipal bond?
There are several types of funding for it. Typically, and in today's market, a general obligation bond or a qualified energy conservation bond, or a bond is usually the best instrument. Tax exempt municipal leases are another instrument that's been used with performance contracts. Their interest rates are not as attractive as bonds at this point.
I was thinking about the interaction with Prop 2.5 and capital exclusions and those things too, which...
You do not need a debt exclusion on this, I believe. It is not required because it's fully funded by the operating budget.
Right, okay.
Taking questions from the fellow group?
Why don't we finish the presentation and then we will?
So if the town... I'll move very quickly now. If the town decides to move into the construction phase, there is what's called an energy management services agreement that the town would engage in with Siemens, and that, of course, would also be vetted, as was the investment grade audit agreement by town council. Siemens would then finish the design, do the construction, do the commissioning, and complete the project. The town is involved in the process all the way and signs off on payments, not based on some schedule, but based on actual work completed. In the contract that my firm was engaged by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to develop for you as a starting point, there are liquidated damages provisions, there are significant levels of process to make sure that these projects run smoothly. There is one central point of responsibility in these contracts, and that is the energy services companies. In this case, it's Siemens. They are fully responsible. There will never be an issue of the designer did it one way and the builder did it a different way. So you're protected, and that's one of the key attributes of Chapter 25A, is that you're able to allocate a lot more of the risk and the responsibility to Siemens. The town would look for its financing to pay the cash flow requirements as the project's being built. Once the project is complete, Siemens would begin their process for their annual measurement and verification. Data will be collected on an annual basis, and there will be a reconciliation that's done year over year. The town would then, once the construction is complete, would then look to probably backstop short-term borrowing. If you borrowed short-term for cash flow, you may want to backstop it then with some long-term funds. Many of my communities have been doing just that. So, you know, one of the things I like to talk about with my clients is sort of balancing risk with cost. It's what we all do in our lives. And under a performance contract, there's sort of four areas where you're able to do that and protect yourselves along the way, and ensure that you have a very good project that produces sustainable results. The first is developing a sound baseline. Like any other project, anything you take on, if the foundation is not solid, everything that happens from that point forward is not going to materialize. So we work very hard with Siemens to make sure that we understand what the real baseline is of the building before they start projecting energy savings. Establish key project economic drivers. All of these are under the control of the town. Siemens may make recommendations. I may make recommendations, but it is the decisions as the town's project. It is the decision of the town, and there's some key areas. One is, what is the unit pricing for energy? Because the value of that energy can vary widely. So what's the right number to use as a starting point? And we spend a lot of time discussing that. Interest rates and borrowing term, 20 years, 10 years, 15 years? That's the decision on the part of the town. And what interest rate should we use in this analysis? Again, we're going to project forward. We're not sure what interest rates will be at the time, what's reasonable. So we work with your financial advisor to make sure that this economic model is real, is attainable, and you can actually borrow at these rates. And then vendor markups and pricing strategy, and I'll just spend two seconds going through that. Under Mass General Laws, Chapter 25A, it's Section 11, which is the procurement that this was done. There's two different sections of that procurement mechanism that you could implement performance contracting. One is 11C, which is a full request for proposals. The other is 11I, which is a request for qualifications. Request for qualifications, that addition to the statute has allowed municipalities like yourself to use this procurement method and go out to bid. When the statute was enhanced, my firm had some issues and some concerns with it, and as I was engaged by other municipalities, and I've been working in this region quite a bit, it was clear to me that the statute allowed for initially more of a fashion show. So how do you really get your hands around costs? So, how do you really get your hands around cost and real qualification? So, we put together a very comprehensive request for qualifications that allowed you to do price discovery as part of the process. And that's what I worked with Catherine on when we implemented this procurement. As a result of that, we have known and measurable values for all of the soft costs associated with this project, overhead and profit. So, we will see at the time the proposal is made to you, the subcontractor bids, and then we will see the entire markup strategy that had been previously negotiated and accepted as part of the project. There's not, there's not going to be voodoo between what they've done in the field and what they come back to you with a price. It is all transparent. Once we've seen that pricing, once we've seen the application of the markups and the overheads and profit, we close the books. So, we sort of have an open book process on the front end, like you traditionally see under Chapter 149, then we close the books. And Siemens will give you a firm fixed price for the scope of work that they're doing. Period, end of sentence. So, that's one way that we've determined is the best way to balance your risk with cost. As opposed to leaving it open book, which folks tend to think provides you more control, it also provides you more risk as things change in the project, because all of those additional costs get passed through to you. In this case, Siemens is on the hook to do smart bidding, smart design on the front end, because they're going to eat any cost that they missed throughout the process if it was something they should have known. And then the last piece, which happens really in Phases 2 and 3, is this, is the performance assurance. Again, it's a balance between risk and cost. How much measurement do you do on the back end to get to that level of detail of, did the energy savings materialize? So, we look at each individual project that gets done, and we make a determination of what's the right measurement technique or evaluation technique for that specific measurement that makes sense. We don't want to overpay for something that we're not going to get significant benefit for. So, we look at all of that, and we measure, again, the value to the community. And those are going to be decisions the community will make. So, that's it.
Just to start on some sort of logical, anybody from the board have questions?
Thank you. I know that's an important area these days, look at our energy savings. We are part of a regional school system. Would that involve the regional school, even though it's geographically outside our town? Because we have like 50% of the budget up there. Would that be included?
The school, NARA school, is included in this project.
But not the regional?
Not the regional.
Okay. And then street lights, obviously?
To the extent, Siemens will look at exterior lighting. One of the, one of the options that some energy services companies and Siemens can, if we direct them to, is to consider whether or not you want to own, if you don't own the streetlights and you want to own them, if there's a cost benefit to do that. Otherwise, if they're owned by the utility, upgrading doesn't provide you a whole lot of benefit.
And what about expansion of services to say, "Do you want ball field lights?"
Are there lights there now?
I don't think so. What ball field are you talking about?
At Coner Park.
Does the dog like? We've got, yeah, we want all the facilities. We've got so much square feet that we contracted to look at. We built in enough square feet to take a look at virtually every-
I'm just curious.
And facility.
To the extent you're using energy, the goal of this program is to enhance your utilization of energy. So, if there is some form of lighting there, and there's a benefit, an energy savings benefit, the design of this program is that anything that's done under the project has to have a guarantee of savings for water or energy.
Okay. Quick.
Just a quick question, maybe a little backstory. Siemens being, of course, a foreign company, but they were nonetheless selected. You know anything about that process? Was it best value or anything like that?
Well, and I'll certainly let Catherine chime in as well. We put the request for qualifications out to bid and got responses from three companies, three very large companies. Siemens does have a very significant domestic business here in the United States. I don't know that there was a consideration, and Kurt was on the selection committee as to the origin of the parent, but the bidders in the process were Trane, Honeywell, and Siemens. But Siemens was selected based on a very comprehensive evaluation and scoring matrix that looked at qualifications, staffing, prior experience, their technical approaches, their approaches to measurement and verification, their success in the local market. So, there was a very significant evaluation that was done by the evaluation committee, which was made up of members participating in the bidding process, of which your community was one.
Thanks. Department heads.
Back in July, I believe, was the Siemens team that came out and investigated the buildings.
Yes.
What was their preliminary cost savings for the town, or was there one that was valid?
I don't, I don't have that document with me. Catherine may be able to spin through that quickly while I'm talking. The process that we went through with Siemens, we actually added a step to this overall process for the communities out here in the western part of the state. And the first step was for Siemens, at its cost and at its risk, to come through the buildings and do a sort of 30,000-foot view, looking at your energy bills and taking a quick walkthrough of your buildings to identify the potential energy savings opportunities. In that analysis, Siemens came up with- Oh, about $786,000 worth of energy savings potential that could be applied across, in this case, they identified five buildings. In the investment-grade audit agreement, we actually added some buildings in there. But they looked at five, excuse me, five specific buildings and did a metric analysis to compare the usage per square foot existing to where they thought the usage per square foot would be. So, it was about $786,000.
Over what type of?
That's capital cost.
Okay.
Estimate, do we cover the capital cost, 20 years?
Well, the projection, yes, over 20 years. That's exactly right, yes. It's basically, they identified about $41,000 a year in energy savings over 20 years.
Because your presentation talks about operating cost savings, so I was assuming it wasn't capital cost, but operating costs with-
Yes, yes. This is capital investment. $785,000, I apologize, is capital investment, which is, which is the amount of money that can be spent by leveraging 20 years of $41,000 a year of energy savings.
In order to save, so there's some percentage associated with that.
Correct.
Capital availability.
Yes.
Had to be funded, okay.
What happens if we don't have that kind of savings because of overall energy costs continue to go up? This is operating cost, overall.
Well, that's a, that's a very good, that's a very good question. And that's why we talk very specifically about establishing the baselines. And I encourage my clients to establish the unit cost of energy. It's something that's, for so, very real in your budgets, but also something that's reasonable. What is typically done into these projects is there's an escalator that's applied to the value of energy. And the town makes that determination as to what that escalator is. But Siemens' analysis here is likely taking $40,000 a year of energy savings and escalating it about 3% per year to come up with an overall value of energy that could offset project costs. What if the energy costs are higher than what's projected in the baseline? The value of that energy savings is actually higher. So, if you think about a dollar of energy saved at today's cost, if costs go up by 20%, the value of that energy is actually, of that energy saved is actually 20% higher. So, you get added benefit. But I think one of the important aspects of this project for folks to understand is nobody, nobody can predict energy pricing. If we could, we would be sitting on an island somewhere, happily enjoying a Mai time. The energy markets are so volatile and so complex right now. What this, what Siemens will do in this project is they will guarantee units of energy saved. They will guarantee kilowatt-hours of energy saved. They will guarantee oils, gallons of oil, gallons of propane saved. And then the unit costs will be applied based on the values that the town determines are appropriate.
Any other department heads or town employees? Bruce?
The buildings that are under review or consideration aside from the NARA school, does that include the old town hall, the use of which hasn't been finally determined yet? And this building, the new town hall, which is nearing completion of complete rehabilitation? And is it including firehouse next door? And one of the buildings might be under consideration.
In the investment-grade audit agreement, there's about 131,000 square feet of building space that's been identified for Siemens to pursue. And it includes the NARA school, the town hall PD, old building, and other buildings and facilities. And these were identified by the energy committee to be included in this agreement. If there are other buildings that have not been considered and you want to be included in this agreement, that can happen as well.
There's only five or six public buildings in South Hampton, I'm aware of.
Did we include the old station over on the ponds?
No. Well, yeah, the 131,000 square feet, that's, we had extra cover, all square footages.
Include that, like the building over there?
We made sure that they could come in and take a look at this new, old ladder beam just to say, hey, good job. There's additional improvements. The town hall, Bruce, if we want it, golf field, landfill, Allison PB is a good situation up there. Firehouse, and a little, there's a little fire station down.
I'm thinking that the water-
You took five buildings.
What's happening? You took five, yeah, the original one, they did with you, and they did five. But we wanted to make sure they missed the facilities when they did that. We want to make sure they connect all town facilities.
I didn't think that every single building they wore an A-trip today.
The big buildings. 131,000 square feet that we have in contract with them, that costs us $8,500 per break-up, should give them at every square foot, down buildings and facilities.
Would there be any savings to the water department for the pumps and storage? We did talk about that.
We want them to come in.
Were you taking down the, you said you were talking to us about the pumps?
And again, the preliminary energy audit was like, was a 30,000-foot view. Is there a project here? Does this make sense? Do you even want to go to town meeting with the request to do an investment-grade audit for this, for these buildings? And the, the review of the five buildings that they did demonstrated that there was a project at about $786,000. To the extent other project opportunities are identified or eliminated as part of this process, will be, will be identified at the early stages of the project. At the kickoff meeting, Siemens is going to get direction from the energy committee and Diana as to which buildings to focus on and pursue. And the way the contract has been written is, for sure, there are two buildings that have been listed, and then there is sort of a bucket of square feet that includes the following facilities. To the extent we want to look at other facilities, Siemens would be happy to look at additional facilities. Remember, they get paid for the construction work they do. To the extent we identify other buildings that have opportunities for them to build some projects, I'm sure they'd be happy to look at those buildings.
Any other questions? It's my understa- Oops, sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like some clarification if you don't mind. I was in dialogue with Mr. Johns. You talked about the 785,000, is that the correct number? Plus or minus, it doesn't matter. So, I think what I heard you say was that over 20 years, there'll be approximately $785,000 in energy savings. So, therefore, we can spend $785,000 to make that happen, and it would be a wash. Is that what I heard?
In essence, that's exactly right. The way, the way an energy services company values the size of a project, so I'll just use some round numbers. If you have a million-dollar-a-year energy budget, and Siemens identifies 20% savings can be achieved, and they're willing to guarantee that. So, let's say that's $200,000 a year for 20 years. We're looking at a $4 million project. Okay? Now, it's really going to be a bigger project because you're going to have to carry, calculate in the cost of money. The project gets funded upfront through borrowing, so that Siemens, the general contractor, can get paid. And then your debt obligation that you've incurred for that 20-year period is paid for from the reduction in your operating budget from the energy savings. So, in short, it is a wash. You're using today's dollars to pay off a stream of payments over the next 20 years.
So, can you understand why you want to do this if it's a wash?
You're upgrading in-
What is the benefit for us?
Well, that's, that's sort of, there's two answers to that question. The first is, when the energy services company calculates energy savings, it starts with a basis of, here are the savings that are achievable under this project. They add risk factors to protect themselves so they don't write a lot of checks. They discount those energy savings, and they build your project off of that lower amount. So, there will likely, no guarantee, but there will likely be additional savings over and beyond your debt obligation for each of those years that will accrue to the benefit of the town, those excess savings we talked about. So, that's sort of the first answer. The second answer is, and I say this to all my clients, performance contracting is the right vehicle for a municipality who has a series of capital investments it needs to make in its buildings. And it, and those capital investments sit on capital lists for year, year over year over year for all the reasons we all understand, budgetary concerns. This is, under Chapter 25A, you have an opportunity to early retire, if you will. And by early retire, you're retiring aging equipment before it dies. But that is clearly at the end of its useful life. Now, use the benefits of that to pay for it over the term of the contract. So, if you have the ability to do, to take all of the projects that have been identified and need to get done, and build them into your capital plans every year and get them done within those periods, within a reasonable period, then performance contracting may not be right for the town. But if those capital requirements are not being met, and you don't have the facility internally, the staff, resources to make these things happen, this is a very good opportunity of getting a lot of investment done upfront and paid for over time.
And this program specifically deals with energy saving and capital investments only?
Energy and water conservation savings and renewable energy strategies.
Okay, but not general capital improvements?
That's correct. However, to the extent you need to replace a roof, and in doing so, you need to insulate the surface below the roof, the cost of the insulation can be included in the project.
May or will?
The cost and the benefits of the insulation absolutely can be included in this project. To the extent you're looking to do perhaps a solar photovoltaic system, and a white roof is being installed as part of that, there is energy savings benefits for that white roof that can also be included in the cost of the project. A lot, and the, and the savings associated with that would have to be guaranteed. One of the key considerations that will be established upfront is what is the economic threshold? If this is going to be a project that's self-funding, meaning all of the benefits need to be used to pay for all of the debt, then there will be projects that the town would likely want to include in this program, but won't be able to because they have very long paybacks. The key benefit of a performance contract is you get to use, leverage the benefits of projects that pay for themselves very quickly, high savings, low cost, with projects that have very, you know, higher cost, lower savings, very long paybacks. And those kinds of projects are the ones that you don't even consider. You know they're going to save energy, but you don't really consider it when you make the investment. You make it because you have to, like a boiler replacement. Major capital upgrade, you need to do it, you want to do it right. I know there are some issues at the, at NARA school that you'd like to address. You're going to know those capital investments at some point. You're going to know that there'll be some energy savings, but you're not going to be looking to leverage those energy savings to help pay for that capital investment. Because if you don't do it under 25A, you're going to have a reduction in your operating budget that you can't keep in a reserve, whereas you can under 25A.
Real? It's my understanding that the contract has gone back to, was that town council went back to Siemens? It's now being reviewed again by Siemens before it comes back to us. So, we're not in a position to sign this contract now. Any other questions? Kurt?
Just one comment. Once we move ahead to the kickoff meeting with Siemens, the interest of stakeholders or school, facilities here in town, we'll get together, hear from Siemens project managers, what they plan to do, what they plan to do, get into the building, what they're looking for. So, we'll need participation from the department heads of their destinies fairly quickly, you know, in a month, I'd say. And then as the project progresses, there's going to be information provided by Siemens that he essentially said, "Well, we can do this much at one building, this much at another building, right down the line." And a decision will have to be made at some point to go deeper and pursue the individual project at a specific building, or do we send a model and stop there? So, of all the buildings in town, not all of them necessarily will proceed to the end and give them the conservation measures. We won't necessarily spend $785,000 on the project. We may say, we want a $250,000 project, own new two buildings. So, those decisions will be coming up. It's going to impact- So those decisions will be coming up, it's going to impact the various departments in the park heads and their facilities. So there's going to be a continued call, and that's one reason we want to be in the park, and we need just a good job of heads on that.
All right.
Excuse me, I have a question. So originally, you said this was basically budget neutral? I mean, we got the savings over time, those savings will pay back our bond.
Correctly.
But there could be above and beyond that savings to the energy savings to the town that would go to our bottom line, perhaps?
Absolutely. I'll give, I'll give you a good example. If Siemens evaluates the boiler at Norris School and makes a recommendation to replace it, they'll tell you the cost of the savings. And let's say the town moves forward, the town implements that project. Siemens will identify 100% of the savings associated with that boiler, but they're going to guarantee 90% of it. That 10% buffer is, again, it's a risk factor for them. They're building your project off of the lower number. So that additional benefit is excess savings that accrues to the town each year in the operating budget.
So in, in funds, in savings?
Well, in units of energy saved, which then has a value. So let's say for, for an example, the baseline is $2 a gallon of oil, and you're paying $3.50, and there's additional savings, you're actually going to see increased benefit to your bottom line because of the value of those savings.
Right. What people have to remember is it's units of energy saved, not dollars.
Correct.
I mean, we'll be saving units of energy that have a value, but we don't know what that value may be. So if we use 1,000 kilowatts in a month, and Siemens brings us down to 800, we save the value of the 200 kilowatts, not the actual dollars and cents.
That's correct.
It is a translation, but not, you won't see a direct savings off of this bill, this month's bill versus next month's bill.
You may actually even see a greater savings. For an example, Siemens, in, in the baseline, the town agreed to a set of rates, and the town negotiated about third-party supply and bought it at a lower cost, you'll actually see more savings. So those two issues are decoupled. Unfortunately, because of the issue of, of the price of commodity, nobody can predict.
And just for my own clarification, what we're talking about is taking and funding a capital improvement with a bond, and paying that bond with the savings. So we're going to, the example you gave is the $785,000. Let's say we do the whole thing, and we bond 785,000 for 20 years. Siemens is guaranteeing us $41,000 a year in savings, which technically should pay the cost of that bond over the 20 years. At the end of the 20 years, we've paid for the project and theoretically not increased our operating budget by that.
That's exactly right.
But we have to go out and buy, borrow the money.
You have to go out and borrow the money, and I, I can assure you that the financial pro forma you see will actually model your, your debt obligation against the energy, the annual energy savings projection.
But the town would be ultimately responsible for the bond issue.
That is correct.
Can I ask a question? Are, are we talking about reducing carbon, our carbon footprint, so to speak? I mean, by reducing energy, isn't that a value that we're not really talking about?
There's an, there's an unknown value.
Well, there's an unknown value, but we're a part of that.
Yeah.
Right? So I don't hear anybody talking about that.
Well, absolutely. That's, that's a very good point. Couple of things, couple sort of additional benefits of energy conservation, energy efficiency. You are definitely going to reduce your carbon footprint. You're going to reduce your, your reliance on, on your fuels. You'll reduce your reliance on the amount of electricity you're currently buying. Also, to the extent Siemens may be able to identify 20% savings, and to the extent the town is considering becoming a green community, the value of this program is a key component and attribute of your desire to become a green community can be used as, as part of that process.
I'm going to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, we have to move on, because with this capital project, we also have the Capital Committee here somewhere, and we have to talk, meet with them and talk, review the capital plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Energy Team.
Right, before the Energy Committee leaves, though, before Kurt leaves, I just want to discuss the IGA and what, how we want to proceed with that now. So you heard the presentation. The IGA, the agreement, is not in front of you because it's still at Siemens. Can we just put it on the agenda at another time? Or do you want to have Kurt come back?
I think Kurt should come back when the contract comes back.
Okay.
And then, and maybe we'll call for other people to come in that night if we can do that. Maybe we can schedule it on our next, I don't know how fast.
Well, we're meeting, we're meeting every week, so hopefully we'll have it back next week, but you and I can talk.
I just, how fast it comes back and when our next department meeting is, and get everybody back. Thank you, ladies.
I'll come back, it's a good time to talk.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thanks, Kurt.
All right, Capital Committee? Yes, no, no, yes? Bruce? You are the Capital Committee tonight? You got the floor?
Got the floor, members.
Sorry, you got the floor.
And of course, Diana, assisting us with the spreadsheet.
Great. Thank you.
Bruce, do you want to talk to the microphone so they can get toward it? Hang on, one more, I sent mine down that way.
Take the mic. Take the mic. They won't be able to hear you.
You know what? We have to listen down too, because I can get people behind us.
My invention?
Yes. Breaks up that noise. All right, we got a full agenda, so let's go. Everybody? We didn't.
We're meeting with the Board of Selectmen at, at their request. As I said, there's four members of the Capital Improvement Committee. We've been meeting since the first of the year with Diana, who's been assembling information received from various department heads, including the school committee, the police department, the highway department, and other departments. And these requests were put into a spreadsheet, which we have reviewed on several occasions, and it's been amended and revised to what the committee, our, our last committee meeting recommendations were to the Board of Selectmen as far as which projects to fund and which projects not to fund. And our recommendations are basically contained in the spreadsheet. And there, we have eliminated a couple of items in our analysis and added, or, or agreed with some, some of the requests. If any department head has, wants to participate in making comments, or Selectmen have any questions, I would like to try to cancel them, help with that.
I could just take a minute and explain the spreadsheet. I tried to, I don't know if it's clear, but in column, in the FY12 column, everything in the sheet was what was in the plan already was requested. When the Capital Improvement Committee went through the request, they actually eliminated some and moved some into FY13. The items that are in bold in the FY12 column and in the project column are the, are the projects that they are recommending for this year. The things in the FY12 column that are not highlighted have been removed from the plan entirely, and the ones that were moved to FY13 are in bold in the FY13 column.
Thanks.
So the total right now from stabilization would be 184,573.
I can ask a quick question, just for the scope of stuff. Mr. Collins, the roof, half a million dollar roof, what is, what is the background on that? Where does that stay? I mean, is that something that has to be done in a certain amount of time, or what's the story?
The, I'm sure there are folks in the roof that may have a better history, but since my time at school, roof has, the roof has leaked, the warranty has since expired. There are three separate roof systems on the school, and particular areas of concern are where these systems join each other. There's also, there's also some concern with, it's a school that has porous block, and it's designed to have water be able to get in through the porous block, and sometimes it's hard to interpret whether it's actually leaky, but it's coming in through a problem through the porous block of the roof. The block was recently sprayed in a couple areas, so now we believe that the leaks that occur are due to, are due to, due to the roof. So we did get, we did get a quote, a request at the school committee, and the quote was $575,000.
Is that, is that the whole, the whole roof?
The whole roof.
The whole roof being replaced?
Correct.
Okay. How much are you spending on patching it each other out of your budget?
It, it depends, it depends on the year it was, until a couple years ago, it was under work, part of it was under work. But we spent, we spent several, we spent several thousand dollars every year with patches, and it really, it really varies. I mean, sometimes, sometimes big sections of them need to be repaired, and sometimes it's a narrow, you damage. Okay, I just wanted to know. Thanks.
What else? I guess the question becomes, how much money is in the stabilization account?
20.
120. Simple math says to me, we are $60,000 over.
64.
64. I was, I was going to go with the round numbers, but.
And that's the bleeding that there is.
Huh?
That would be zero.
Zero.
So can we go down the list and talk about things? Communications, is that, is that something we already did, I thought, before?
Yes. The first three numbers, yeah, the first three numbers are already on your debt schedule. So the first number that's coming out of stabilization is the sweeper under Highway Department, $72,000.
Ed, tell us about your sweeper needs.
What's that?
Sweeper needs.
What was your question?
You have $72,000 for the sweeper.
Uh, yeah, the sweeper really costs $164,500, and we're matching some of the offsetting costs with Chapter 90 money, State 80 money, which allows us to use them to offset the costs. It's essentially part of our cleanup and maintaining our structures without sweeping the streets, catch bases get blocked, and we spend more money. As far as the existing sweeper, it's close to 17 years old. It's functioning, but every year we're repairing more and more of it, and it's a very costly , expensive, keep growing. There's probably a value, trade the value of that item anywhere from $10 to $3,000 as the kind of bid and who they go to. But with that being said, we need a piece of equipment that is dependable. This piece of equipment is hired and is not as dependable as it was, and we're dealing with a lot of it now.
Is the chapter 90 and this one covered?
I mean, if we don't find out if we can use it, we can do it like lungs, robe, hair. Is there a fund that we can take away from?
Any questions?
Comments? Anything else? ADA accessible doors for the library?
No, that's not going to be funded.
That's gone?
Yep.
So that's not in the 184,000 at the bottom?
Correct.
66 for two cruisers, we can all tell that story. Chief kicked it away with one cruiser last year, and we usually replace one every year, so this year we got to bite the bullet and put two on.
That's correct. The car, Mr. Chairman, had been replaced last year, now it has 145,000 miles on it. Had to replace the $700 radiator fan assembly on it this year. We had transmission problems with that same car. There's been $2,000 put into that car, just because of money. If we don't replace cars, we'll be looking at another car that's got 75,000 miles on it, another one 77,000 miles on it, another car we want to replace that's 111,000 miles on it. So if we don't replace those cars this year, then we're going to be looking at four cars all over 100,000 miles next year.
So we have the other point of view then, is what can be eliminated from this to reduce by the 64,000 that we're short? Another perspective.
Going at it that way?
Yeah.
Well, can I just comment that prior to our shuffling this around and moving some expenses forward, the figure was significantly higher. What was it, do you want to call it?
525. It's right there on the sheet. The total, well, excuse me, not at a stabilization. It's the difference between the 525 and the 434 at the bottom, so about 100,000 we took off already.
So the 184 only reflects the bold numbers?
That's right. That's right. And actually, it doesn't include the first three bold numbers. The first three bold numbers are the, are below that, under, I have them in different categories. So the 184 is just from the sweeper down.
Minus the 5,000 for the library.
Right. Well, only the bolded things from the sweeper down.
Okay.
The master plan stuff, that's already spent, right?
Yeah, that's in its final year.
What's the ventilation at the school at 11,000? 12,000, 11,000?
The, the second floor, the Norris School has one hallway that is, second floor is where the third, fourth grade classrooms are, speech and language, and the public association rooms. And if it is in a sense of 90 degrees for four days in a row, it, it becomes basically intolerable to teaching there. A few years back, the school had to be, had to close school because it was too hot and putting in some sort of ventilation up there. We believe that we can open up the windows and suck out of the hot air at night and alleviate that. Well, it's only a problem typically in the very beginning of school year, in September, it's still hot, or at the end of the school year, in June. It's not a problem the rest of the year, but during that time, the lights are off, the students are typically sitting on the floor with lots of water. The water room cafeteria is down, usually bring them down, the classroom is in cafeteria. It just isn't, it isn't conducive to learn.
Ed, did you want to give up on the sweeper this year so we get the two cruisers? Get a sweeper next, a sweeper next year? Is that, is that feasible?
It's at your description, we'll spend more money, we're spending repairs, so that's kind of the bottom line.
But the, the sweeper you have now, I've seen it about time, is it, is it functioning to some degree this year?
It's functioning, it just wouldn't matter, so many fatalities, we didn't spend any repair help, and we didn't have work ourselves, so it's fall apart.
But do, would you?
I mean, we have obligations with EDP because we have stormwater areas in town that are, that after we swept, three times a year, or if it's broken down. And we, we have to rent the machine, we spend the work on. So I like, years ago, we used to hire and contract all our cleaning catch bases. We could only do about a third of our catch bases a year, but spend about $60,000 to it. Now we have a lot of clean low catch bases.
We'd be paying to third.
And we're trying to save that by not to run. But it's, it's your call, not mine. I'm going to be gone in a few years, maybe sooner, so this will be the next problem down the road. But we'll keep banding it and putting it out there, but we do have commitments that certain streets have to be swept, such as everything along Lion Street and County Road because it's in a neepa area, and is required to be swept three times a year to defies the normal structures. The rest of the town, we put forth almost 3,000 material, 3,000 tons of material out there, what goes down, we have to take down, okay? We have motorcycle people, we have cars, we want this stuff cleaned up, safety issues. We're going to pay for it one way or the other.
Mm-hmm.
It's your call. I don't want to see, I want to see cruisers replaced, because we fixed them. And I know the problem, because you didn't do last year, there were more this past year than any time before.
I was just thinking if.
We don't have the money, let the sweeper go.
This was.
We're going to pay for it, or we don't fix it.
But I was, I was just taking a look lines. We have to catch up for last year, because we didn't get a cruiser last year.
Taking a gambling.
This might be the catch-up year to get the, the two cruisers and then.
My only comment is, if you're so short on it, you're going to wipe it out this year, what's left for anybody next year? You got to start thinking of bonding somebody's stuff, people. That's my comment.
Tom?
Well, that's what I was going to ask, but I was seriously considering spending all of the stabilization fund on capital improvements in Vista 12 and, and start. in fiscal twelve and then start fiscal thirteen with zero.
Doesn't make sense.
So it doesn't make sense to me, but it does beg the question that Ed is now asking, is there another way to go about some of these purchases?
Well, about six months to a year ago, we asked Ed to come up with a list of roads that were substandard, and I forget what the dollar number was, but I know it had millions after it.
Yeah, almost sixty million dollars.
How much?
Sixty million dollars. Lots we had state grants, and then we were kicking into seven million dollars. So you save that out of this, so we're looking at six to seven million dollars worth that we're obligated to take care of over the next ten years. My other number is here, just giving you. I'm sorry, not sixteen, twelve million.
Oh, my.
Twelve million. And of that, there's five hundred thousand waiting for a grant on former road. There's...
I thought we didn't get...
Four point six million. No, we're only after the end. Four point six million to E Street, which is on the two thousand and thirteen tip, which is transportation approval program. And then in two thousand and twelve, we're looking at two million dollars for the second half of Glendale Road, between Pomona Road and Luton, which is ninety title and ten state. That's all part of that plan put together.
I mean, I wouldn't wanna see it become a Christmas list, but certainly somebody, we could come up with a number of items to put together, including some roads that are in bad shape, and put out a bond issue one time and do it debt exclusion and purchase a limited number of things, including a sweeper, cruisers, or whatever we need to get ourselves back on an even footing. Because frankly, right now, with the way the revenue is, we're never gonna replace the capital account.
I'm sorry, the road's concerned, I mean, the thing on the capital plan...
No.
The things that brought to you is that it is, you're not fixing them, and they're costing more and more every year, you don't win at all.
But I mean, if you took, I'm not saying everything on this list, but if you took the roughly two hundred thousand dollars and lumped that in and left the two hundred thousand dollars, it's already in the account there and tried to build off of it somehow.
So what do you wanna do? You know, the need is the two cruisers in my mind, that's the one that's standing right in front of us. Because if you're going on a call and, you know, tire rush, let go or something on these things.
The cruisers are, we're paying for what we did last year.
Right. So the real, the getting to yes, we wanna be able to lease purchase two cruisers this year, that's the bottom line, I would assume.
Maybe the way to rephrase this is, Ed, if you had to lease a sweeper to do all, if your sweeper did not work at all, and you had to lease a sweeper to do the streets, what would it cost us? About a thousand?
Sixty-five eighty thousand dollars.
So what does that translate into actual? Hundred dollars?
Times, you know, a hundred dollars? No.
I'm just saying, how many hours would you need it? How many hours does it take to sweep all the streets?
It takes us all of April, May into June. So you're talking at least eight weeks, ten weeks of sweeping. Wiring, there's no rain.
Right. Forty hours each week, so it's thirty-two thousand dollars.
Like, thirty-two thousand. Since the borrow money on a sixty-month basis to pay for some vehicles that have, you know, some depreciation, I mean, especially cruisers, seems like you would wanna buy them on a sixty-month...
Well, I think for the police department, cruisers are essentially disposable item, whereas his sweeper is more long-term.
Right, and that's like a ten-year.
And you might wanna finance his sweeper...
Ten years and pay for five.
Pay the cruisers off.
And five. To borrow, I mean, put that as a more...
But if you're, you're not gonna go out to bond on a seventy-two thousand dollar sweeper, you need, I think you would need to want or want to put some other items, make it worth your while.
We're sweeping now, before this sweeper, this sweeper that we're talking about will come to effect next year.
Yeah.
Not now.
Right.
What we're trying to do this year is get by, because we have.
Right. Which makes bonding...
I want to make that clear, that this is enough this year, this is for next year.
Which makes bonding it more practical. If you don't, by the time the process is done...
And there's another issue, Tom just reminded me, you could lease purchase, which is, you lease it for four or five years and you buy it out of the ballot afterwards.
Lease to buy, right. Yeah.
Well, you still, did I say, Barbara?
There's another method of purchasing capital, and that is a capital exclusion, where you decide what capital item you want, it's added to the tax rate for one year, so that you're not carrying the interest cost. I think that's a good way to do it. The other thing I've been looking at is from looking at the tax recap sheets, that this past year, for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, we had five hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars in additional tax revenue. It's interesting to me that three hundred and eighty thousand of that is new growth and the normal two and a half percent. So that means that the other hundred and ninety-two thousand must be debt or other sources of revenue. I noticed that in establishing the two thousand and eleven estimated local receipts, we're a hundred and twenty-three thousand less in projection for two thousand and eleven than we actually had in two thousand and ten. Are there some major changes, non-recurring kind of things, that have forced us to reduce our estimated local receipts by a hundred and twenty-three thousand?
Excise is one that comes to mind, like, excise?
When we have non-recurring, like, if we have additional revenues that are non-recurring, we don't include those, we don't change our estimates to include those. So it's possible that we've had over the last couple of years some revenues that have come in.
Well, we had the sale of the properties that we did a little...
Right. Well, we had that, but that was in a different account, but...
What about the money that came into town from the defense? Not TARP money, but the other money out of that plan? The stuff that came in, some of this was the money position, I think, with the school and stuff like that, it was funds.
We shuffled some money around for that, but that would translate into free cash ultimately, so...
We, I guess we gotta come back to, are we gonna fund the capital account? And what are we gonna fund and what aren't we gonna fund?
I think the capital account, funding the capital account and spending all the money out of it, I think the answer to that is probably no.
What was the number that's in?
One twenty. It's one nineteen and some change, yeah, one twenty.
But actually, looking at, trying to meet the needs is the way to look at it somehow. Try to get two cruisers this year.
Mr. Chair, what if we bought the two cruisers out of the stabilization fund and looked towards gathering up the other pieces into a bonding issue or some other means of financing?
Seems like a way to go.
We'll be left with sixty-something.
We'd still be left with only sixty thousand dollars.
We wouldn't spend it all.
We wouldn't spend it all, huh?
Then Ed, you put together, as I said, a bonding issue with the sweeper. Is there anything else in town that's sort of laying out there?
What questions do you do?
I mean, years ago, this question would be to have a cruiser. I'm not taking it for bad people speaking himself, but this cruiser comes up every year. It should be part of his budget every single year that a cruiser's in his budget. This year, you're dealing with two. But why isn't that budget allowing for one cruiser every year as part of his operation budget, when you know it's gonna be there?
He screwed up last year.
Okay. Buy one cruiser, put one in his budget.
But it wasn't, it wasn't in his budget, it's under capital.
Yeah, but we've got, we should be buying a cruiser from somewhere every year.
And you know it's gonna happen, it's operational thing, it's not a budget, it's not capital.
And it's the same way with your trucks. We should be buying, whether it's five years or ten years or whatever it is, we should be planning to buy a...
Well, you're on the right track with Velcom's five-year plan. Believe me, I did just a big difference.
But now, but now there's not enough money to do what we need to do, how do we go there?
Well, I'm just bringing back this whole issue, where this is a recurring thing, but every single year, it should be part of his operation budget.
We made... About half a cruiser, because I don't think we can meet thirty-three thousand, but if we put half a cruiser in his budget, then every two years, you know, we can get a cruiser. Couldn't work that one.
If I remember how the cruisers get used up, it's, you gotta be replacing one a year. One is always going offline and one coming on, and the others are intermediates.
We won't make that mistake this year.
No, we won't make that mistake this year. But the problem is, how do we pay for it? I think the logical way is, whoever said it, buy the two cruisers out of...
That's my suggestion.
Stabilization and bond, bond the other necessary items.
Do you wanna look at bonding the school roof and put it into a larger bond?
Well, here's something with that school roof. Now, if combined with the energy audit thing, if, just hypothetically, if they could come up with a photocell roof project, you know, that's a large, flat roof with good exposures, whatever the school budget is for electricity, if that roof could generate additional or pay for some energy on the school, whether that would be something we'd wanna get involved in, rather than jump in and do a roof right away, and so they'd go on through the building.
And Beth did mention that the insulation could be usable, or rather, you could use that financing, that ESCO funding mechanism.
And that could just be your ventilation system.
Also.
Right. So there are two, there are two things. One is that the school community is looking to the, looking to state, they have filed, they have some improvements which include, there are a lot of schools that are in boards and lagerages, so I'm not sure when we will follow that view, but they are trying to, they're trying to find other avenues as well, so not just...
No, we signed the school building assistance request weeks or months ago, I think.
Yes.
And that's, they put in for the roof, but like you said, you're in it. You're, we're way down the list, if even seeing the list at this point in time. Now, the roof might, if we can't do the roof through...
The ESCO?
Yeah, then, then, you know, we may want bonded, because, I mean, that roof was, when that school was done twenty years ago, that roof was in deplorable condition at that time. I mean, some of us may remember when the gym was one big sheet of plastic that drained, ripped, drained to garbage pails, because it took the water off, as it leaked in while you were at town meeting, took it over to a barrel.
If we do that now, we'll...
So, I mean, that was in deplorable conditions until the school was renovated twenty years ago, but it is twenty years.
Right.
And that, those were...
I have a question for Velcom. The guy in here, which you said before, but I might be reiterating it already, after, isn't there a program or a boost program that's gonna be to help maintain buildings to a state on the building programs? Did you just talk about that?
Yes, exactly. I just talked about, yeah, it's getting, absolutely, it's getting, and keep for that, and it really depends on them where the need of a nursery would fall, when they look at all the schools in the state.
I have a question, maybe you did your question. At the library, we have a management, my circle shelving, so I'm assuming it has, this time it has to be set by the first of July, is that right?
I'm sorry, what?
No.
The library shelving?
It's a project, so it carries forward till the project's completed.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you.
No, you don't actually have that money.
That's my motion.
You know that's...
No, you do. It was funded in FY eleven.
Oh, we did? Oh, it's, they've got an actual line item for them?
Yeah, it's already funded. That's already funded, yeah.
Okay.
Can I go back to my original question?
Yep.
I guess my original question is, is if we have new growth and the two and a half, and we increase the amount of revenue, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars from one year to the next, what happens to that money? Because I thought that basically we are having level-funded budgets for operating expenses.
No. No, there are wage contracts out there that are not level-funded. So we could get down to the specific numbers for you, but no, there are other things that aren't. Energy costs, all of those things, the market funds.
Insurance.
Insurance, health costs, all of those things.
Workers' comp, yeah.
And that would take up a hundred and eighty thousand?
By law, it does.
Surprised.
I'm not, well, about, in what sense?
Because I hear that department heads saying they have gotten many increases and they're operating back at levels that they were several years ago, so I don't understand that.
How do you think the wage increases were funded, then, if we...
The three percent the town meeting voted at in September.
I have those. If you can wait a minute, I have those.
No, it's just a more rhetorical question, in a sense, Barbara, that obviously there have been increases. If you look at the total budget, fiscal year eleven versus fiscal year twelve, you see a difference in the budget, even though, yes, it's true that some folks are spending less on expenses and operating expenses and more on wages, and other departments are spending less on wages, more on expenses.
Have there been new positions added that are taking up large amounts of capital?
Not that I'm aware of, they take up large amounts of capital, no.
I just...
Yeah, we've got an issue, already this year, we're gonna spend extra money on a cruiser, and I forget what I was just thinking of, but we increase, no matter how hard we try, we spend more money.
We also lose, we lost state aid. So this year, we probably will have about three hundred and fifty additional monies, but we also, we lost state aids. We lost about sixty thousand in state aid, but we also, last year, used two hundred and twenty-six thousand free cash. So again, if we...
And that's what it was. And winter roads is already over...
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Hundred. Probably like, close to a hundred.
More than that. So that comes off the top of that money, so, like, as always, there's not enough money to go all around. But moving on, we got, how do we...
Can we go back to what we think would be good for the bonding?
I think Jess had a motion.
I'm making a motion at this point, that we vote to fund the cruisers, the two cruisers in the amount as projected of sixty-six thousand, out of the stabilization fund, and look for alternative financing, including the possibility of a bond issue for the other items.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just for the purposes of discussion, that means if the town meeting doesn't vote an alternative means of funding those items, those items will, of necessity, not be funded.
If the two-thirds vote, that's a simple mention.
If the money isn't there, they can't vote to fund it, in any case.
No, but it would be two-thirds for borrowing, too.
Yeah, two-thirds for borrowing.
Two-thirds, both for borrowing.
So, I mean, you're gonna have to put together a...
What options would we have at this point?
Well, you can't, it's too late to get it on the ballot to dedicate, to capital exclude it. You could do it after the fact, but, you know, that basically would be your only option.
I mean, the only, what I guess we're saying is, the two cruisers are critical, and after that, we'll wait to work out the rest of it.
Right. That's what I was suggesting. However, as Diana said, too, if the vote fails to authorize the bond issue or some other financing, then we have no means of financing these other requests. But the other option is, it's too late for debt exclusion, so we don't have any options anyway.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's too late to put a capital or debt exclusion vote on the ballot, because the ballots are gone for the election. So you can always debt exclude or capital exclude something after the fact. You can, you could go back and you could exclude your current debt that you have, you could vote to have a debt exclusion for that. But what I'm saying is, you can't do it before, you can't find out whether the town's gonna allow you to capital exclude it or debt exclude it before town meeting.
Right. But we still don't have enough money.
Yeah, we don't have enough money in any case, so, but you're right, we can't until we get to town meeting to see if the town will vote to...
Right, you can borrow the money, you can, you can bond with town meeting vote, but you have to, in order to exclude it in some way from taxes, you have to go to a ballot box.
Right, that's true. So we have a motion to purchase the cruisers from, from stabiliz, or, on the capital plan, and to forego the rest of it until we resolve.
Do you wanna ask for any other opinion?
We got a motion and a second.
Oh, there is?
Just made the motion to buy the two cruisers from the...
Okay. I was just thinking if there are other, the...
Well, that's, that's the other part of his motion, is that we would explore other options to finance the other...
I'm just, if anyone wants to speak up for any of the other stuff here, like the bulletproof vests or anything like that.
I think it's all necessary, it's certainly justified, and I just don't see a fiscally responsible means at this point of getting there.
Do you mind a question? I mean, there's bulletproof vests in here, which seems like we're putting them aside in the venue right now. Yeah, as our chief, we were going, it's pretty important, this, but hang on, because aren't we losing our certification process?
Well, the vest we need to replace, vests have, by Department of Justice standards, a five-year life, and vests deteriorate from sweat, and as you can imagine, after wearing them in vests for five years, it's, you know, needs to be replaced. You can't wash your vests, the panels inside the vest cannot, because they have a lot of weave, cannot go on a washing machine, the best thing to go on a washing machine is to wipe them down with a damp, warm cloth, all the laundry that the vest gets in five years. So they needed to be replaced, they expired December of two thousand and ten, so we need to, you know, urgently replace those vests.
Can we, can we replace some and start getting on a rotating basis to replacing them all, instead of doing them all?
Well, not all of them, there are others that we're not replacing yet, that don't need to be replaced, those are the ones that have in fact expired, they have in fact been based on.
I think from the reserve fund, we talked about it, we could make a request coming from the reserve fund, I mean, this is something I want to just hand out there and.
No.
Do bottom of the.
No, but, but, and, and this seems to be another item that should go on a, on a continuing, rotating, you know, not.
Like the cruiser.
Not waiting until we have ten to replace, or whatever number we're replacing, but replace some every year, so that we constantly.
Well, the problem with, what I have is in the budget, in the chief's budget right now, is you got thirty-three thousand for a cruiser, you got five thousand for vests, all of a sudden, that budget's going to be so high.
There goes the three hundred and eighty thousand that Barbara just found.
So this is a way to massage the money.
So, consider a reserve fund transfer for those.
If I had something, I would consider that as a.
And that amount that they have requested can actually be reduced by a thousand dollars, because there is an existing account that we have twenty-two hundred dollars in, that will make up their difference, so we can reduce that ninety-six hundred dollar request with one capital projection by a thousand dollars.
Which makes the reserve account a little better.
And like you were saying, they put a couple in every year, add a line item.
Add a line item to generate, even if it's a couple.
Okay.
Okay?
Is there the difficulty that the vest has to be fitted to the person, right, custom fit to each individual?
Mike, is it possible to put a couple line in?
Couple what?
Vests into his account this year.
Well, I think, this year, we're going to handle it, maybe handle it with a reserve.
But I mean, you could actually do what you're saying to do in the future, but do it this year, and you could do some, some capital improvement, split it.
Well, could we, could we consider this year's purchase, the reserve account, and then next year, put a couple into the.
Why don't you say if you're going to do it?
As I'm understanding it, this is not going to, that's all for the reserve.
Now, the, there is a reimbursement for the federal government that's available, fifty percent, and that is the money that has gone, the account that we have now, bulletproof vests, that will reimburse the bond in there, and I have used that in between coming times when I had to come to the town and ask for money for vests, I've been able to use that money to replace vests or buy new vests for new ones, so, I will apply for reimbursement again, and then have that money directed into that bulletproof vest account, so, I may not need to get more money from the town next year to replace vests, depending upon the reimbursement from the Department of Justice.
But this year will, this year will, right, but this year, we'll handle it through a reserve, if we can handle it through a reserve.
What, what happened here, just real quickly, was about six years ago, the company that we had, and then made our vests, had failure in their vests, and as a result, the Department of Justice mandated that all those vests be immediately replaced, so we had a batch of vests that had to be replaced immediately, so, this is a five-year cycle, we've gone half the five-year cycle, that's why we need so many at this time.
All right, anything else from CAO?
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
I was just wondering, for the roof at the school, is it a place that is really dangerous, that should absolutely be replaced now, is it possible to allocate some funds, if you feel there's dangerous areas?
A few years back, there was, there was one place where they went to replace, that they noticed that the structure underneath had sustained some damage, what we had out there at that time, so right now, we're, we're patching, and it's, it's leaking into hallways and into classrooms, and it depends on, it depends on the direction of the wind or the vent, so sometimes, it can pour torrentially, and the school not leak, and it can be a lighter rain with the wind, and the school leaks.
And that could be the blocks, but.
Yeah, and, exactly, but, so, I don't believe right now, there's this structural worry about the roof, you know, caving in or something like that, but, but it is something that we're continually replacing tiles, the problem then with replacing houses, when, when we take them out, they, then they bypass the smoke, which is their tile problem, so we're continually replacing tiles that they washed on, and then they go down, what they call down, cut and replace, but we can't not have it in there, and there's a couple places where we do have plastic sheeting that's down there, but I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a safety, it's a good question.
One more time, and then we got to, we got unfortunately move on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just voice my concern, while I know our, all of our department heads are doing a great job with the limited money that we have in our town, I would just ask that we be careful in what we put in the capital improvement items, because I have a problem with some of the bundling to create capital items, and, and I think that we're going to, if it continues, we may lose the definition of what a capital item is, so I think we need to be careful as to what we accept as capital items.
Sure. All right, I think that's a point well taken. All right, and I apologize, but we could talk about money all night, but we have to move on. Next on the agenda is assessors and the mileage issue.
Do we take a vote?
Oh, do we take a vote on it? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Wait a minute, just wait one second.
We didn't take a vote on that motion, I'm sorry.
On the vote group?
No, we're just taking a vote on Jess's motion, Jess's motion to pay the two cruisers. Ready? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the assessors and mileage, thank you for reminding me about the vote. You're on.
Hi, it's my understanding that they have been forwarded to the folks.
You what was forwarded to us?
The figures. The figures.
The figures?
The gas is going to have to do a database spreadsheet based on.
Oh, oh, here, here, yeah.
Based on fifteen, whatever, fifteen miles per gallon spreadsheet, depending on how many miles you've driven, and based on fifty-one cents a mile reimbursement, and the cost of gasoline going from, I think it was.
Three dollars, three fifty, and four dollars were the three scenarios.
How many?
I used to work in the oil and gas industry.
What, I mean, three fifty?
So, three fifty is where it seems to be stabilizing, three fifty-eight in that range.
Well, we, we can't really predict where it's going to go, we can only report where it's been, but it's, I think it's anybody's guess where it's going. We also have been working on considering either lease purchase for a car, for the assessors, we also are presenting this evening an article to go on the annual town meeting warrant, to ask the voters if they would approve a vehicle, we are not saying to buy it, to lease it, or to rent it, just if the voters would be willing to indicate a willingness to provide a municipal vehicle for the assessors to use as they go about to town evaluating properties.
So you, you have a proposed warrant?
Yes, we do. I do have one, yes. The warrant article you're asking for?
Yeah, I thought that's what you said you had, Mike.
Yeah, yes, I do.
No, it's just, I'm saying that if gasoline costs three bucks, she gets twenty-four dollars.
That's how it is now.
And the gas, here she gets ninety-seven dollars, so it's twenty-six dollars, she can use the gas, thirty percent. That's my whole point.
So it's not really.
I have to, I have to.
Thank you. Thanks.
The reimbursement rate's going to be. I don't think she has that much sense, but remember that it's a ride dad to.
Are you, Barbara? Oh, there you are.
So the capital unit is finished, or completed?
Um, you actually have two, two, two articles here.
Those are the articles that we decided to have included, the back page is the article about a vehicle.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
They are going to do the straightforward.
Thank you, Dylan. All right, um, anybody want to start this discussion?
Maybe just read through it first.
To see if the town of South Hampton would vote to provide a motor vehicle for the Board of Assessors' use, straightforward.
I'm not sure that that, you have to have the funding, you have to have an amount in the, at town meeting, you have to have an amount in the source.
Whether we would support, agree to put the article on the town meeting, is that our, our prerogative?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Isn't it our prerogative, whether we put an article?
Yes, right, unless it's petitioned, I'm just suggesting this article's not adequate.
Right, but the concept, I think, is whether we're being asked to.
Yes, it's the concept, not the actual purchase or lease or.
I'll be the first one to stick my, my mouth out there, because I can't support this, there are other people in town, I, it's not enough mileage to support a car, certainly to sit there, when we've got cruisers with a hundred and forty thousand miles on it, to have a car driven, how many miles did we say?
Well, the estimate was three months out of the year, the car was driven four hundred miles a month, which is twelve hundred miles a year, by my calculations, so, the average car has driven twelve thousand miles a year, so this is one tenth of a car, so from my perspective, it's hard to justify a car based on its total usage being one tenth of the average vehicle used per year, at least here in the United States.
Which is why many places reimbursed at the government rate, the government flowers.
Well, I can remember when the government's rate, reimbursement was fifty-eight cents.
It goes up and down.
Okay, so then we're back to the stipend, is it possible that I have a stipend, when we discussed that?
Sure, did we have a stipend that was based in a reasonable calculation of the actual out-of-pocket cost, as opposed to this word meager? What are we supposed to do with the word meager? If I ever went into, Mike, who said it? The last article said it, here, I'll give it right here, can you see it?
I think we're, but, yeah, she's asking for a stipend.
Okay.
So we're, she wants to.
Yeah.
Meager circle right there?
I put in eighteen thousand.
I was just going to come back, I was going, that was the question I was going to ask you.
Put in eighteen thousand, I got my twenty-one oh six, I moved the right way, but the two hundred dollars a month, that's three comeouts.
So you put in eighteen thousand, this is town or South Hampton?
Town, this is the only one that goes.
Eighteen thousand town miles for two hundred dollars a month.
On your car?
On.
When or without mileage reimbursement?
No mileage.
No mileage.
You have the stipend.
Stipend, you get it.
Two hundred dollars a month, and that's it for the year.
That's it.
No gas?
For my gas, for the now, I'm thinking for maintenance.
He gets twenty-four hundred dollars a year for his stipend, for eighteen thousand miles.
So back to my point, I think that the concept of being reimbursed in some method is absolutely right on, my problem with this whole thing has been that you approached us with the notion that the reimbursement was too meager, and I simply asked for some more specific calculations, let me finish, please. That I specifically asked for more specific calculations to justify the expense, I can't imagine going in front of a board saying, the reimbursement is meager, so we need more, that just, frankly, I was offended by the approach, and I wanted, and I made it myself, I did some, okay, what's the difference? The difference is twenty-six dollars a month in out-of-pocket expenses at the fifty-one cents per mile reimbursement rate at four hundred miles a week, so, can we, and then, that's about a hundred and fifty dollars over the course of the three months, can we agree to reimburse that additional out-of-pocket expense, or base it, key it to the market where gasoline is? Something that's reasonable and logical and carefully thought out, not using the word meager, I don't vote for meager.
I, I do believe that your gasoline calculations, however, do not take into consideration insurance.
Absolutely not, they're fixed costs. Go ahead.
Repairs, and replacement costs of a vehicle.
Correct.
The insurance.
Correct, absolutely, those are the fixed costs, do not change if the car sits in the parking lot, or not, they don't change, and I told you that when you were here last time, those are fixed costs, I was only going to look at the variable costs.
But, but those are.
Well, they can be arrowed to, depending on what kind of.
Fixed costs by definition are fixed costs.
Well, it depends on what kind of a parking lot, buy a Cadillac, it's one kind of a replacement.
No, I'm down, that's it.
All right, all right.
That's it, this is, this is too meager for me.
Okay, um, it, do I, does anybody want to make a motion regarding the Board of Assessors' request for a, a, town, town meeting warrant article?
I make a motion not to put the warrant on the town meeting.
Article warrant.
This article on warrant?
I make a motion not to.
Is there a second for that?
I'm, that's.
My ass will take over, what's my business?
Excuse me, we got a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on the board's part? Yes, ma'am.
The woman, Lori, is asking for a vehicle, whether it be just to borrow a vehicle from some other department, just to do her travel for maybe two or three days a week, just a few hours, I mean, that's basically what her request is.
That's not what the written request was.
Oh, I know, I know, maybe there was a little bit of.
But there, but there is no other vehicle, there is no, there's no practical way to accomplish that.
All right, when the police vehicle becomes available.
It's not a safe vehicle to run, that vehicle.
That's why we're taking it off the road.
That's why we're taking it off the road.
All right, and what we were presenting is, in the future, if it is possible that a vehicle does become available, could, could that be something that the town considers?
It's always something that can be considered, but what we're dealing with right now is this article here, a motion and a second, all in favor of denying that article?
Aye.
Aye. Um, you also have some other articles.
Yes, last year, we presented an article on the forty-one to the elderly exemption, there are nine people who received it, we were giving them five hundred dollars, last year, you voted to give her, give them a thousand, at the same time last year, we asked that the numbers be increased, that people who make less than thirteen thousand or fifteen as a, as a couple would receive this benefit, and now we're asking that the numbers be increased to eighteen thousand for a single person, and twenty thousand for a married couple.
How many people is that?
Yeah, how much does it cost?
Well, right now, it's, well, there's nine people who receive it.
No, we don't know.
Oh, receive it now, receive it now, receive it later. We have no way of knowing how many eligible seniors we have in town, we can only base it on the fact that currently, there are nine people who have, are eligible for the thousand dollars, and we chose not to put it forward all at one time, but I think, as you would realize, that our seniors are struggling with the same kinds of costs and pieces and need and utilities that the town is struggling with, they have no method to replace the increased costs, these are four seniors who are seventy years or over, particularly widows are having a more difficult time, widows and widowers, because formerly, they would have two incomes from social security, and now they are faced with only one.
Is there any, we're just, is there any, any projection as to the cost on?
Can you tell us how much?
We have no idea what the income is.
But if it stayed the same as this year, how much would it cost? If no, if there was no, no increase in the number of eligibility, what would this cost us?
Well, that's the whole idea, is that we were expanding.
I understand that.
We have nine people last year, now it could be a hundred and fifty.
But if those nine people, what would it cost us?
A thousand dollars a person.
Yeah, you're adding another thousand dollars.
So if you have a hundred and fifty people, you're taking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on taxes.
So I'm just curious how you came up with the number, that's all, why eighteen thousand?
Oh, I mean, there was, it was, the option was, so it was higher, was to go to twenty and thirty, and we find, split it, well, we didn't evaluate what the towns were doing when shows numbers that were similar to what the town would do.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to support this increase, it's a very modest increase in income, it will cover, you know, a few more older adults, and eighteen thousand per single's still almost at the poverty level.
My argument would be that.
So I would, like, commit a motion during the second.
My argument would be that maybe it needs to be looked at a little bit differently, and maybe it should be higher, we're missing the true people that really need this, because we're just picking a number.
This is the.
If you feel that way, it's going in the wrong direction.
But I'm just saying, we're just picking a number without no real stats behind it, that's my question, she just picks.
No, we did this last year, we evaluated what other counties did. Yes, no, we looked at, we thought, what would be in the rational figure, we have no way of determining that, but it seems that we would like to go higher, we would like to get the most people's benefit.
I think that's a modest increase.
But it's a modest increase.
I can support that, I'll second that.
There's now a motion and a second, is there any further discuss, wait, is there any further discussion on the board part?
Any further discussion?
All right, um.
If Miss, if select Madugo would like to increase the potential to twenty and thirty, that's the maximum, that is not really allowed.
I would just like to know what the, the benefits are to the town, what actually is the need within the town.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now you have one other.
And do you have an article for that?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Oh, I got it, sorry, thank you.
And we have a small personal property exemption option, right now we're doing personal properties, one bill is actually only four dollars, we'd like to eliminate all personal properties for value of less than ten thousand dollars, we currently get two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars in personal property taxes, and it's ours in the-
In total? The total personal property income is-
Yes, oh, under ten, two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four.
So we are in fact losing two thousand dollars?
Yes, but we're spending hours to make that two thousand, we're sending out mail, we're doing all sorts of things.
Process it, right.
What would you do with the hours that you save?
Actually, we are considering, because evaluating personal property is so complex that we are considering, and it hasn't been done for years, is getting a consultant who is a professional.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, didn't Lori get her hours expanded?
One more time.
Sorry, David.
No, didn't Lori like get her hours expanded to do this type of stuff? Wasn't this-
We were, sometime Lori's hours were expanded, as I recall, to decrease the amount of reliability, we were gonna rely on an outside consulting firm.
So we decreased Lori's hours when this consultant comes in, then, is that what we're talking about? Because that's why her hours were increased.
Yeah, well, no, we're decreasing the personal, small, little petty personnel-
So we could decrease Lori's hours down then, I would say?
No, that's not necessarily true, because we have to curtail properties and make it to-
Well, that's what you were, the argument was before, is that you wouldn't have to bring in-
Still, it's your property's over ten thousand dollars, it's just not a small property.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, you?
I was just saying, what would happen with the hours that would be saved from this? Because you're taking in two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars, the presumption is you're spending more, if you will, in wage costs to go out and process these properties under ten thousand dollars, so you save some amount of hours.
Postage, postage is going up, that's one of the, one of the factors.
The hours that would be saved, the reason-
She's saying that part of it is the, is the, not only the hours, but postage and other, the paper.
Well, how much do we take, how much do we take in that tax?
It's kind of meager.
Hundred, two thousand nine-
Nine hundred and seventy-four.
So she's making twenty dollars an hour, is her number.
It's a hundred hours, twenty, twenty hours, right, so, so you have, in effect, you'd be getting back those hours, you'd not have to expend those hours at fixed cost in this case, you know, for a time.
Actually, what we're proposing is to put that particular area of taxation is more complex, and has not been done in about seven years, to get a professional in who does only that kind of evaluations.
Now, what, what, do we have a number that we now do under ten thousand dollars, or is it, do we go down to zero, from zero to ten is what we're eliminating?
Yes. Again, one bill is for four, we have many of the little tiny bills that send out whatever the-
Well, would we eliminate that at five thousand dollars, and maybe save half the revenue in three-quarters of the time?
That's right.
It's into your, it's into your choice.
Right, so the number of properties, you know, the Bell curve probably just-
I want my MBA, I want my MBA.
I just start the thought and let him go.
Carl Friedrich Gausen, his son.
I love stuffed bell peppers.
Okay, so, so, I like that idea of actually dropping down, yeah, to five thousand.
All right, I, somebody want to make a motion on that issue?
I still move, that's great, I move.
That we establish less than five thousand dollars?
Right, and see what happens.
What would be, let's, let's, is there a second? All right, further discussion, hypothetically, if we drop to five thousand dollars, what would be the bill for the five thousand dollar?
I don't know, we'd have to go back, just to see what the, what the law is actually, the minimum value cannot be more than ten thousand dollars, so it's ridiculous.
All right, so, five words. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anything else that you wanted to ask us about?
How about, as department head, do you want to report anything?
Yes, we have submitted.
I don't think you, do I have anything else that you-
Um, not tonight, but we set up something to prepare this one.
What was that?
Well, it's not with them, but-
It's not, yeah, it's not on my agenda. Because I gotta move, if you, we can come back to it, Barbara, I just, we're about an hour behind now, actually, we're two hours behind. I got no clock in this room to keep me track of where I am. All right, next up, wait, before I, Richard, I know you've been there patient, any other department heads that want to report, because the department head meeting was scheduled for seven-ten? Are you, are you, do you want to, do you want to skip that part?
I do, I'm here, will I hear anything?
All right, I mean, did we cover it during the budget discussions? Or did we?
Board of Health is in the back there standing.
Oh, they, well, they're gonna, they're up with building inspector anyway, but I was trying, I was trying to get anybody out of here that-
Oh, yes, I think the-
Yeah, this is a good idea.
I was out right here at seven-thirty.
Last week at seven-thirty. Um, all right, then, then we'll just roll on to, to, um- Though if you have nothing else to, to add to us, or want to address us?
Well, I think we just want to say that our main thing we're thinking of is getting extra money, hopefully for the board director. And also-
You've heard our problems with money.
Yes, I know, and I have a question too, we've had a couple of big bills coming through the furnace, is there any way we can get some help, it's, it's gonna be about some hundred dollars.
The gentleman you want to see, or the back corner?
Finance committee has control of those extra funds if we have any.
I think we need to use the Bell curve to figure it out.
Yeah, but Mr. Erastason was doing that, all right, um, yes.
One comment from the library, the board's search committee has interviewed eight applicants-
Yes.
And has selected one outstanding person that I believe the PCF will be going to the PQB, PQB, and-
Otherwise known as PQB.
Tomorrow, and I'll, I'll go to the financing committee, and we're selecting, and go next week.
Thank you.
This is for the full-time?
No.
Director?
No, there is no full-time director.
This is for?
The, the, the replacement director. There is no full-time director at this point in time, they've asked for the hours, has, has not been approved for full-time hours.
Willing to do part-time, and a good person?
Thank you, sorry to have held you so long. Building inspector, Board of Health. Technical clerical support, we're about to cut the legs off from underneath you.